Twenty-three meeting of the thirty-ninth council of the city of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Dooley.
Here.
Mayor Protam Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Henan.
Here.
Councilmember Vilani.
Here.
Mayor Dean.
Here. Ms. Mitchell, are you ready to administer oaths of office?
I am.
We got somebody else to do it.
Is that our new mayor?
Yeah.
I mean, who wouldn't vote for him?
Yeah.
Okay, have you raised your right hand? I, Bridgette Dean.
I, Bridgette Dean.
Having been duly succeeded.
Having been duly succeeded.
As the mayor of the city of Berkeley.
As the mayor of the city of Berkeley.
Hereby solemnly swear.
Hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
The Charter and ordinances of the city of Berkeley.
The Charter and ordinances of the city of Berkeley.
And then I will perform the duties of my office.
And that I will perform the duties of my office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll have you raise your right hand. I, Michael Dooley.
I, Michael Dooley.
Having been duly appointed.
Having been duly appointed.
As a council member of the city of Berkeley.
As a council member of the city of Berkeley.
Hereby solemnly swear.
Hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
The Charter and ordinances of the city of Berkeley.
The Charter and ordinances of the city of Berkeley.
And that I will perform the duties of my office.
I will perform the duties of my office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, traffic jam. Sorry, new to this.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Okay.
That's exactly what she said.
That's definitely what she said.
It's code. You're done here.
Which they all know very well, apparently.
Family support, yes. Okay, our first order of business is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion made by councilmember Baker with support from councilmember Vilani. Are there any changes or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Dooley.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Vilani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. The agenda has been approved. Please stand now for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've now come to the portion of the agenda when you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Council members will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, you may put your name on the, there's a sheet at the clerk's table, and someone will get back with you. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. And when you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. Okay, Ms. Mitchell, do you have any correspondence that you would like to enter in tonight's record?
Yes, Your Honor. Joel Olford, Berkeley, asked, "What is the projected revenue and budget surplus from a 3.4581 millage increase? And is there a specific expense driving the change?"
Thank you. Seeing no other public comments or people who wish to comment, I will close the public comments section and move on to the consent agenda. Ms. Mitchell, please read the items on tonight's consent agenda.
Approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the thirty-ninth regular city council meeting on Monday, December nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Two, proclamation number P-123, matter proclaiming February twenty-twenty-three as Black History Month. Three, motion number M-323, matter of authorizing the city manager to sign the application for additional service credit purchase for Matt Wells, approving two years of additional service credit. This purchase is allowed by the city of Berkeley Mape Agreement and meets all the requirements of the MERS Plan document.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Protam Gavin with support from councilmember Henan. Are there any corrections or additions? I said that, didn't I? Sorry. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Vilani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dooley.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes, the consent agenda has passed. Moving on to our regular agenda, Ms. Mitchell, please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda.
Recognitions, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Within the consent agenda, council adopted a proclamation declaring February twenty-twenty-three as Black History Month in Berkeley. I've asked Mayor Protam Gavin to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Your Honor. A proclamation of the council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, proclaiming February twenty-twenty-three as Black History Month. Whereas, Black History Month grew out of the establishment of Negro History Week in nineteen-twenty-six by Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, and whereas it became a month-long celebration in nineteen-seventy-six. The month of February was chosen to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln, and whereas during Black History Month, we commemorate Black history and its cultural contributions to American life, and is designed to recognize and pay tribute to the many contributions of African-Americans to the history, society, and culture of the United States of America; and whereas, Black History Month grants us an opportunity to recognize and honor the heroes of African-American history and celebrates the achievements of African-Americans in the arts, civil rights, education, entertainment, government, history, law, literature, medicine, military, music, politics, science, sports, and other endeavors; and whereas, the city of Berkeley continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the state, the country, and the world; and whereas, the city of Berkeley is proud to honor the history and contributions of African-Americans in our community throughout our state and nation. Now, therefore, the council of the city of Berkeley hereby proclaims, section one, that February twenty-twenty-three shall be recognized as Black History Month in the city of Berkeley. Section two, the city of Berkeley also calls upon the community to celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. Section three, the city of Berkeley urges the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in the city of Berkeley to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. Proclaim this ninth day of January twenty-twenty-three at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council. Bridgette Dean, mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number two on tonight's regular agenda.
Presentations, matter of receiving candidate presentations for the city council vacancy.
Okay, I'm going to toss this to Mr. Baumgarten. He's going to lay out the process, and then we'll hear from each of the applicants.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Up to this point, we've had the position of the council vacancy open. We advertised it between December twenty-second, and we closed it on January fifth. After that point, we had our subcommittee convened. It consisted of Mayor Protam Gavin, councilmember Baker, and councilmember Henan. They met last Thursday, or last Friday, at ten a.m. They scored all the applicants individually based on the three criteria set forth in the city's adopted rules and procedures for the city council. That yielded numerical scores for all thirteen candidates. We invited those that were in or tied for the top five to come before you this evening to make a presentation, largely just introducing themselves to the council, as well as the community at large. Next steps moving on from here, council members will take the opportunity to meet and have conversations and interviews with prospective council members. And then on the special meeting on January twenty-third, council will reconvene to make an appointment to that body. That fortunate candidate will then be sworn in at the February sixth regular meeting. So, no decisions here this evening, but a great opportunity for you all to meet your next peer on the council.
Thank you. I will call you up individually in alphabetical order, because I think it's the most fair way to do it. We did have one applicant remove herself from consideration, so that's one less. You will have, I'm going to say, three to five minutes to let us know why you should fill the council vacancy. And first up then will be Mr. Clarence Black.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council, fellow applicants, residents that are watching. I want to first, Madam Mayor, congratulate you on your new position. And also, Mr. Dooley, I wish you both the very best of luck, and I hope to join you soon. The very first thing I want to say is that this is an opportunity for me to formally announce my candidacy, because no matter the outcome of this process, I do plan on running an election to sit in that seat. I had remarks prepared, but then I had a novel idea, which is just to speak from the heart. I've had the opportunity, in the prior process, to meet with each of you, run against Mr. Dooley unsuccessfully, and I think you all know who I am. For those that don't, I'm Clarence Black. I'm a graduate of Detroit Country Day, Bridgestone Academy, and Hillsdale College. I've had a very successful career in business-to-business sales. Also blessed to have a part-time career as a broadcaster, a voiceover actor. So my professional background is obviously very diverse. The thing that means the most to me is my service. I'm a twelve-year veteran of the United States Army Reserve, recently back from a deployment fifteen months ago. And the Army also gave me the love of my life, who I would die if I did not introduce, who's back there, who's a twenty-three-year-plus veteran of the active-duty Army, my wife, Lorraine Black, who, along with my children, they're the reason that I'm doing this again. The reason I'm not doing prepared remarks is my son, I was leaving my son, and literally, he was like, "Where are you going?" It's like a city council meeting. He's like, "You're doing that again?" And he's like, "Why?" And I thought, I just looked at him, and I was like, "I'm doing it for you." You know, we just read in that proclamation that this city seeks to become more inclusive. And the fact of the matter is that there's never been someone like me that has sat in this seat and had the opportunity to lead and to do the things that you do. You can go through my resume and see that I've been successful and see that I'm a winner. The one thing you can't see is that I love this city. It's my home. I own two properties here. My children go to the high school. I go to Clark's. I eat at Berkeley Coney. Don't judge me. I love it. It's delicious. I want an opportunity. That's what my life has been about. I'm a financial aid kid. And the fact of the matter is, if I didn't get an opportunity, I wouldn't have been able to go to Country Day, Bridgestone Academy, and if I didn't work my butt off, I wouldn't have got a basketball scholarship to Hillsdale College. I know how to fight, and I've fought for that flag. So, I do want to say that I've never served on a board. I'm going to say to everyone that can hear me, I would hope that none of you would begrudge me that I have not served on the board, because I was just a little bit busy serving this country. I'm a decorated officer. Again, I know how to lead. I know how to win. I know how to plan. I know how to manage budgets. I've just done it for a little organization called the United States Army. I look forward to having an opportunity to speak to all of you. I look forward to running a campaign. I wish all of my fellow applicants the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Next up, we have Gregory Patterson.
I do have prepared remarks. I tried to do it on the fly, and it didn't work. So, first off, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council, for giving me this opportunity to present. I did submit my resume and my cover letter, so please, if you have any questions, reach out. I've lived in Berkeley since 2011. Professionally, I'm a nurse educator. Prior to that, I was an ICU nurse. During the pandemic, I worked in ICU. I went back, and that's kind of what got me into education. I did quality improvement nursing before that, where I worked with Beaumont Health, submitting to our friends of CMS, our community of Medicare/Medicaid Services, and improving equality for all of our patients that came before us. In the ICU, I dealt with patients and their families in their most critical situations. I know how, excuse me, I know how to handle stress and to keep focused when those situations count. In quality improvement, I worked with our executive leadership team to improve the outcomes for system and all patient populations. I'm a professor of nursing at Madonna University and have been in this role for over three years. While here, I've been able to encourage students that are pursuing their dreams of becoming a nurse. I'm not only a professor that teaches didactic courses, I also serve as a student mentor and a clinical instructor. I have also helped mentor new colleagues with course development and their personal growth. I was appointed to Parks and Rec Advisory Board in 2017. Shortly after that, I was appointed by those members to serve as the secretary of that board, currently serving in this role. While on this board, I worked with Berkeley leaders and city council to improve parks, rec, and recreation for all age groups. I was also part of writing two of the five-year Parks and Rec plans. I also serve on the Planning Commission, appointed by newly-retired Mayor Turbrack in 2018 with full support from the current, that current city council at that time. While serving the residents on this board, I was able to contribute to the current master plan, perform yearly capital improvement plan reviews, and watch sketch plans come to completed projects. I have always listened to residents' comments and have treated all with respect. I have made suggestions that have ensured that only sites that fit into the feel of the neighborhoods have been recommended for approval. At Corwell Health, which is Beaumont, but they switched their name recently, I created and served as vice chair of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. The reason I am here seeking the appointment is that I love Berkeley. We are fortunate enough to live in a town that is close to all amenities, yet still have that small-town feel. A town where we help one another when able. We have neighbors that support one another. City services that are out of this world. And public safety that continues to make sure all residents are safe. Our downtown finally is starting to reopen, post the pandemic. We are seeing a lot of additional businesses being added to the great ones that we already have. We have residents that are active in local issues and will continue to share their perspectives and ideas on how to make Berkeley even better. This combination has been the driving force behind me, serving on the Parks and Rec Board and the Planning Commission. I've been fortunate enough to serve residents and will continue to do so if appointed to city council. With the skills that I have shared, I am confident that you'll be able, that I will be able to continue to build strong relationships with our citizens, business owners, and city staff, while ensuring all voices are heard, and that Berkeley continues to be the best city to live, work, do business, and play in, while making certain that Berkeley is financially able to continue to move forward. Again, thank you for your time and your willingness to serve our residents.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. I appreciate the opportunity to come speak to you today. My name is Andre Rogers. On a professional level, I work for an insurance broker. I help manage companies' benefits that they provide to their employees. So I think from a financial standpoint, I would be best served to help, from a budgeting standpoint, cost mitigation, help kind of see the city of Berkeley into the future in terms of being fiscally sound and financially responsible. On a personal level, probably the newest addition to the city of Berkeley. Haven't quite been here a year yet. Would not have been my first choice to live here, but if I wanted to spend the rest of my life with my wife, I had to make the choice. So, I sold my house. She sold her house in Berkeley, and we bought last April. So, been here about eight, nine months now. I've been more involved in her kids' lives. I volunteer at school. I didn't realize how many snotty kids go to school here, and it's pretty exciting to be more involved. And I'm just looking for another opportunity to be more involved in the city and do more good. So, I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Next up, Mr. Rollatt.
Hey, everybody. I'm Scott Rollatt. My wife and I met at Berkeley High, and we've both lived here for forty years. So, I'm really excited to kind of step into something that I haven't done yet. I've done a lot of things in Berkeley. I have my kids with me today who attend Rogers, where I went. I'm a proud raccoon. Went to Anderson as well. I actually just stepped off the basketball court coaching Anderson, and it was probably the best dressed I've ever been while coaching. Usually coaches in some sweatpants or something, so. I went to Rogers, Anderson, Berkeley High. I feel like I have a very interesting point of view. I was a kid that's doing all the programs that I hope to help us build and make better for everybody. I have served as the Berkeley Hoops president. I've been on the board for twenty-five years. Board president for about six. It's, I was the first one to join the board that actually played Berkeley hoops. So, having that, being able to be on the court as a player, and then being able to take what you've learned to make a program better is really what I've tried to do with every step of every coaching job that I've had to this point. Professionally, I am a coach, like I said, and also a substitute teacher in the Berkeley district. It's been really fun actually being a teacher in the same classrooms that I went as a kid. My daughter, her kindergarten classroom was my same kindergarten classroom. And now I'm subbing in the same kindergarten classroom. It's very, it's very strange, but I wouldn't have it any other way. And I wouldn't say, I'm not somebody that, like, woke up and said, "I want to be in politics." It's just, I want to be in Berkeley. And I want to be a leader for Berkeley and be the voice for all the people that I've grown up with. I mean, a lot of people take these positions, and without having the direct Berkeley background, I think that a lot of times you're missing the voice of the people. You, decisions are made, and you don't know that, hey, that you just took something away that was, you know, thirty years old, or something that was fifty years old. So, I'm, I think that, over the course of this process, what I really want to do is be more involved overall in maybe not just this role, but also in more city services, sitting on additional boards. I've been working remotely in background screening for about twelve years, so I have a ton of free time. I drive my wife crazy, which is why I am all, she's kicking me out of the house to coach basketball, baseball, you know, basically everything. So, right at, when my workday's over, at about five o'clock, you can probably find me at a middle school somewhere, running Berkeley hoops or coaching Anderson. I'm the announcer for the varsity boys' and girls' basketball team. So, I think all in all, what I want to do is basically continue being a leader that I am right now. Don't want to change anything, but add this other piece to my resume and really help out in some other areas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stapp.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Josh Stapp, I appreciate Mr. Rogers bailing me out. I thought for sure I was going to be the newest Berkeley resident here, so. Two and a half years, thank you. I moved by way of Austin, Texas, about two and a half years ago. My wife is born and raised in the Detroit area, and her sisters are both in the area. One's in Royal Oak and one's in Beverly Hills. So, we looked at houses all over the metro area and decided to make Berkeley home. Could not be happier with our choice. We love the small-town feel. Our daughter has gone through second, third, and now fourth grade at Rogers as well. She loves it. She made a lot of friends. We've loved to see the progression that Berkeley has had over the last two and a half years during the time we've been here. We've also become regulars at some of the local businesses. Clark's and Amici's is a favorite as well. Very excited at what's coming in and what is happening, and I'd love to be a part of that progression with the city as well. My professional background is an attorney, and I'm on several boards through my firm and some of the community bar organizations. I sit on several DEI committees, so it's great to see sort of the initiative towards diversity and with the Martin Luther King holiday coming up in the March, that's going to take place over the holiday in the next week or so at the high school, as well as February with the Black History Month. I think that's great. I come from a diverse family. My wife is Arabic. I am Mexican, and our daughter is black. So, we get a lot of questions most of the time when we're out places. A lot of stares, and a lot of times, our daughter, who is fairly innocent, has a lot of questions for us about why. So, it's great to see that initiative in the government locally as well. So, I appreciate the consideration. It's nice just to come out and meet some of the people that are our peers and, you know, our neighbors in the community, so I appreciate that as well. And I'm sure we'll talk more in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stevens.
I have prepared remarks. Seems to be the theme. So, good evening, everyone. Thank you for this second opportunity to share a little bit about myself with you. Last month, when I addressed you for the first time, I spoke about my passion for robust civic engagement and my commitment to servant leadership and good governance. I shared this commitment, that this commitment has been part of not only my professional experiences working at the Michigan Roundtable for Diversity and Inclusion for fourteen years, but also embedded into my personal life. I spoke about the opportunities I had to be engaged as a citizen in Berkeley, to co-create a community and a shared vision with my fellow neighbors. Tonight, I want to speak a bit more about my hopes and vision for Berkeley that I shared in my interviews with all of you last month. I spoke repeatedly about my commitment to diversity, to my values that uphold a seat at the table for those often not asked to be at the table. When addressing the value of diversity, it is not merely enough to speak about diversity. It is critical to connect action to this value. In my interviews, I spoke about my desire to create a human relations commission and a youth council that will have two impacts. One, show all residents and guests of Berkeley that they are fully welcomed. And two, that Berkeley invests in its future by investing in diverse people and ideas today. When you drive into Berkeley, you see the fun tagline, and I think this might be the DDA's doing, "Retro feel and metro appeal." This retro feel to me is seen in the commitment of our city to preserve walkable neighborhoods, build a robust downtown, invest in public services, and support families with quality programs. No one can deny that the small-town feel of Berkeley certainly rings nostalgia of the days of the past. But this is not all Berkeley is. Berkeley has a metro appeal, a connection to a larger region and a central city. This metro appeal calls Berkeley to be welcoming and inclusive of new residents wanting to call this home. I believe I have the skills to work with longtime and new residents, to build together a Berkeley that not only values diverse people and ideas, but lives out this value in the daily action of good governance. I believe the years of organizing communities across Metro Detroit to facilitate their hopes and visions into action is a transferable skill I can share with the residents of Berkeley to help their visions come alive. If given this opportunity to serve on city council, you can count on me to work tirelessly to make sure that all voices of Berkeley are represented in our present. present and our future. As we enter this month honoring the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and next month honoring Black history in America, I am reminded of a powerful statement made by the late Shirley Chisholm, the first African-American woman in U.S. Congress, and the first woman, an African-American, to run for President of the United States. Representative Chisholm said, "When confronted with the challenge of being an outsider in Washington, if they don't give you a seat at the table, bring a folding chair. I am committed to bringing my folding chair and make sure that we create seats at the table for all those who want to build a stronger Berkeley now and into the future." So I look forward to having more conversations with you, and I thank you again for this additional opportunity. Thank you.
So I just want to take a second to thank all of the applicants for choosing to volunteer to serve our city in this way. Over the next week or two, members from council will be contacting you to sit down and have individual conversations, and then we will convene a special meeting on January 23, where we will announce who will be filling the vacant seat on council. Thank you all. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number three on tonight's regular agenda.
Motion Number M-423, matter of approving marijuana adult-use retailer business license PMA-20-0007 for Yellow Tail Ventures LLC, Number One DBA Moses Roses Provisioning Center at 3120 11 Mile Road. The applicant was previously approved on October 17, 2022, for a medical marijuana provisioning center business license at the same location.
Is there a motion to approve M-0423?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Henin.
Support.
With support from Councilmember Valani. Mr. Sterren.
Thank you, Mayor. The city manager wrote an accurate summary that was provided to council, but for those who in our gallery and elsewhere who don't have access to it, Yellow Tail Ventures is one of five marijuana businesses that received approval last year from the city council to obtain a local marijuana business license. They've also obtained their site plan approval. They do find themselves, though, in a position like one of our other applicants, Operation Grow, who already came before you. I think that was back in September or October, whereby at the time that they applied for their marijuana business back in 2020, at that time, state law was such that only those businesses, only those applicants who already had medical marijuana licenses were eligible to apply for adult-use licenses for the state. So much like Operation Grow, Yellow Tail, at the time of their original application, only applied for medical marijuana. Now, since that time, the state regulations have changed, and Yellow Tail, again, much like Operation Grow, has obtained their prequalification from the state for adult use. Now, our marijuana ordinance was written in anticipation of situations like this, where we do allow licensees to co-locate another licensed business at their premises. So you can kind of look at this in a way. It does require your approval tonight, but it's a little bit of a formality in the sense they've already gone through the approval process. But now, we technically need to approve them for a local adult-use business license as well. There's no additional information they need to provide. They've already applied. They've already provided it. They've already been fully vetted. They just need your formal approval tonight so that they can also engage in adult marijuana sales, just like the other four approved applicants can.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sterren. Is there anyone here from Yellow Tail Ventures that wanted to comment on this? Nope. Okay. Discussion from council. Oh, yes. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's going to be nice to say that. Question for the city manager. Originally, our proposal or our approach was to accept up to three. Didn't say we had to have three, but up to three. Do we know by chance if this applicant was in the top two, or were they in the group of three that tied for the third place?
It was in that group, the group of three that tied for that third spot.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on M-0423?
Henin?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
No.
Dooley?
Yes.
Gavin?
No.
Dean?
Yes. Motion Number M-0423 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number four on tonight's regular agenda?
Motion Number M-523, matter of approving a local governmental approval form for an outdoor service area at 3087 12 Mile Road, Berkeley, Michigan, 48072.
Is there a motion to approve M-0523?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Gavin.
Support.
With support from Councilmember Dooley. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Related to the item that we passed, that council passed back in December, Berkeley Common is taking us up on the new and improved version of essentially renting out public spaces. They want to continue to use the Griffith section that they've had since really the beginning of COVID. In order to move forward on that, new owners, I mean, they had to go back to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission and apply to have outdoor seating or outdoor sales and seating area. The previous owners, we believe, did not have to do that because they rolled this out during a period where MLC was just saying, whatever you got to do to stay alive, do it. So this is a new item coming before you, but not for a new use or a new expansion of any of the items that we already have. And it's really a change of ownership is why this comes before you this evening. So it is essentially saying that, yes, council has allowed for this spot to be available. MLC was correct to look at it and say, hey, we noticed in the ordinance, it doesn't specifically allow this. And so this is attesting this, and plus the minutes of the meeting where you adopted the resolution, together, we'll show MLC that Berkeley Common is not doing something that is against the city's wishes.
Thank you. Discussion from council? Yes, Councilmember Baker.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. It's fun to say. Could you please speak to the duration of this particular agreement? If memory serves, that resolution took us through the spring approximately. Does this conform with that timeframe, or does this extend beyond that?
So the state is not as concerned with the timeline. The timeline is purely driven at the local level here. So you're correct that the resolution that we have runs through essentially April 30. But if you remember too, applicants would have to go month to month. So even if, say, for some reason that the applicant does not want to pursue this in February, or there's some reason why we don't want to permit for February, this would still be needed, even if it is just through the remainder of this month. So really, so that is to say, the state doesn't really worry about this as much as we do. It's far more of a local driver.
Great. So if I could rephrase what I think I heard, our resolution, which takes it through the end of April, would in effect supersede this past April, meaning if this appears to be in perpetuity, but yet our resolution would stop short of this continuing on for infinity?
That's correct.
And instead, it would, they would work with our resolution, which would wrap things up by the end of April.
The council's local approval and conditions will control.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilmember Henin, sorry.
Yes. This isn't related specifically to the liquor portion, but do we have any indication when they may be reopening the space, activating it?
Yes, we have the application and the fee in hand. This was an item that came up as they were starting to work with the state to keep the state up to date on what they were doing. But from our perspective, we do have the site plan, and we do have the fees paid for January. And when this is certified with the state, then we would be able to let them use that space again.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Valani?
Do we know what the timeframe for certification from the state is once they submit it? Because we know sometimes the state can be slow in processing.
I don't know what the timeline is. And I'm not sure that the applicant's been able to, they would have done that directly with them. I'm sorry, the applicant would have done that directly with the state, and that's not something that we would have necessarily asked throughout our local process.
Okay. So it could be two weeks, two months, for all we know?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? No?
I guess I just want to follow up on my last question. So given that they have made the decision to move forward, save that space, and are doing all the due diligence, what about, given that that space is there, maintaining that space, all of that, so that we have other storekeepers, all of that, who are in that neighborhood as well, so that it just is still visually pleasing, and it doesn't look like a neglected area, while they are in this limbo, which I understand, but I think that maintenance is an important piece. So what are the expectations for them there?
Sure. So we've had a code enforcement officer meeting and visiting with them to lay out those standards. It's been a constant source of conversation throughout this entire process, but needs to be clean of debris, materials that aren't being used. And I think in the past, as they were transitioning out of the summer stuff, a lot of that stuff was just sort of pushed to a corner. They've gotten that out. They've cleaned the leaves up. They've cleaned any debris or anything like that. They've kept it free of snow, slip free, trip free. Those would be the kind of things that we're looking for in order to allow this to continue month to month through the duration of the resolution in April.
Okay.
Councilmember Baker?
Thank you. Not to belabor the point, but I appreciate the line of inquiry. Should the state's approval process take more than a couple of weeks, we would still be pursuing that routine maintenance and cleanliness of the site, because I have been receiving some complaints.
Yeah, that is absolutely an expectation. Or we would, if we find out that for some reason it's multiple months away, if they do get that indication, then we'd probably talk to them about opening it back up for a period of time. And then if we need to, say it's end of February, early March, before they get it back, we could even entertain a conversation about opening that back up, at least through snowplow season, and then perhaps having them bring it back in. It's not intended to be a storage area. We are pursuing this specifically for the vibrancy in the downtown area, and we want to make sure that they're making every effort to bring vibrancy to the downtown area, or else it's falling short of the whole reason we did this in the first place.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments on this agenda item? Is anyone here that wanted to weigh in? Because I know we've probably all on council have received, you know, questions and what's happening with it. And so I just wanted to make sure if somebody was here, come up to the microphone, please.
I'm here to represent Berkeley Common.
Oh.
My name's Evan Stevenson. I am the director of operations there. Kind of got called last minute by the owners just to come through, so I wasn't really prepared more. But we do have plans in place. Right now, we are talking with the state of, I have three managers that have to do bar courses to be certified for the liquor portion of it before it can be updated. Outside of that, like I said, it's a community area, so keeping up with the cleanliness and everything and organization. Our plans were originally, before we fell into this limbo period, is to build enclosures around our summer cabanas. So that's why they're still up. If that was not the case, we would have taken them down, and it's being extended. Yeah, so outside of that, I have a deadline by, I think, two weeks from now. The state needs the paperwork.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you coming up and explaining further, shedding some more light on that.
Thank you.
Yes. Anyone else? Yes.
Hello, councilmembers. My name's Mitch. I'm a citizen of Berkeley here. I just want to make sure that when we're going about this, the city has something in plan to perpetuate the usage of that lot, but also give back to the public, because that is, after all, public space that has been taken away and given for private use. I understand that we're renting it out right now. I think that's the right move, so the city can retain the property in the future. But are there any plans to actually formalize a park or anything else around that space, so the public can actually use it for themselves as well?
Mr. Baumgarten?
Sure. The mayor. The city is looking at creating a seasonal hub within the area. The long-term goal would be to create a social district that encapsulates many of our active businesses and bar areas and restaurants, so that people can, gives an extra incentive for people to come downtown, and it gives them a place to sort of formally meet, gather, and enjoy all of our restaurants. But we do anticipate, after the duration of this resolution in April, coming back to the council and asking for yearly seasonal items. We're largely in our conversation now targeting May through October, sort of the outdoor seasons in Michigan. But after this point, if council were to approve that, we would open it back up for the winter seasons and restore the roads, and then, again, for ease of kind of our ability to maintain the downtown area. So we'd love to see that happen, sort of a year to year to year to year, and far into the future, seasonal closure that creates a more incentivized downtown, and just a nice place to go and hang out and have a good time.
I agree. The insight helps. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on council or with us this evening? Okay. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on M-0523?
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dooley?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Motion Number M-0523 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Resolution Number R-123, matter of adopting a resolution approving a headly override millage proposal for submitted to the voters on the May 2, 2023, special election ballot.
Is there a motion to approve R-0123?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Henin.
Support.
With support from Councilmember Dooley. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, if council decides to adopt this resolution, it would be forwarded on through the AG's office and eventually make its way to the ballot, May 2 of this year, for a special election. I do have some prepared remarks for you, but it's important to know that this action this evening would start a conversation. Everything that is to be said about it has not already been said. We're going to have very robust dialogue with our community, those thinking back to what we did in '12 and what we did in '18. Those that have been in the community long enough know that we really will make every single effort possible to get questions answered, to talk to folks, and make sure they have the information they need to make the best decision possible. So that is the theme of my prepared remarks for you this evening, kind of following the classic who, what, when, where, why. Starting with our what, this particular millage that we're bringing forward to the residents encompasses pretty much everything that we do here in the city. It's the general operating millage for the city, which is utilized by every single department. There isn't a single department that we have that isn't touched in some way by the general operating fund. Some examples I would share with the community, just in preparation of this, the benefits of having this millage restored would be like our facilities, our infrastructure, public safety, program and service maintenance, public works, the work that they do is largely funded by the millage, rec, library, you name it. This is the bread and butter and the financial backbone of these departments. And the why, you know, we're getting to the point, and this is a quirk of Michigan's municipal financing structure, which I love to nerd out on, but I know not everyone does. But the brass tacks of it is frankly that, without sort of restating this to what our founders set forth in our charter, we would have to start to cut back on some of the external-facing aspects that we've become accustomed to and that many people tout as being what they love about the city. Over the last couple of years, I've worked as city manager, and I've worked with the rest of our administration and department directors, ways we can stretch out taxpayer dollars the best that we are able to do so, so that we can maintain a lot of these services. We can continue to win awards, and we continue to do all the great things for residents and business owners. As the council is aware, come budget time, last year, we had to cut millions of dollars out of our project. And I say millions with pluralized, because it was a little bit over $2 million of things that we were not able to purchase or launch or do in this upcoming fiscal year. So because we had to prevent dipping too much into our fund balance, we still ended up, as you saw in the auditor's report, utilizing about $400,000 worth of fund balance in the most previous fiscal year. It's not a sustainable track. So for example, capital projects last year included library renovations, police vehicles, equipment under DPW, all things that we would have loved to have now and put into service now that unfortunately got put to a later budget year and tried to space out as the resources that we have would allow. So we'll be talking a lot about why we got to this point, but this is largely But this is largely something that you will see repeated in community after community after community. Due to Michigan's tax law, there's a interaction between the Michigan Charter as well as, uh, Proposal A of 1994, and it essentially drives us down year over year. We see some updates, but by structure and by design of the municipal finance system, we are held back from regular, from just even the advancement of regular costs. And we can no longer, and just internally cut, cut our way out of it or push back projects. So it comes to the how part of it. For those that are not aware, um, as we talk about Proposal A, that, um, they're essentially, that these limit the amount of taxes that we place on our residents. And it does it in two different ways, and, and both are good on their own, but it's the interaction between the two that tend to be harmful for municipalities. So this does not include what we were taxed at at the state, at county, at the federal level. This is specifically for, for the local government. And it's critical to understand that while you as a property owner might see your taxes go up a little bit, uh, we do not see the same revenues that are the full bore of your tax dollars. Those that have been through our budget cycle or have read our, the documents that we've put out know that for every dollar, um, you pay in your taxes here, the city captures just a hair over 35 cents of. Uh, we just happen to be the most easy and convenient area to collect those dollars. And we're capped on whatever our general fund millage, um, has for year to year. And we don't even decide that ourselves. There's a, uh, there's a, we get essentially a fraction of those dollars year over year. And it's, um, the cumulative effect over time is incredibly harmful on municipalities. So that, you know, the what or the so what, if you will, uh, we are bringing this to the community's attention, starting this dialogue now, um, and, um, hoping to educate every single one of our voters by the second of May, um, because without the general fund millage, we just have to continue to cut projects, port off projects. Um, I know I've had the pleasure over the last six years to work with our staff and manage the tax dollars responsibly. And we've proven time and time again that we are good stewards of those dollars. We've built a resume. Two things off the top of my head that I would tout as far as those, um, you know, evaluating whether they want to, uh, give additional mills to the city. The city's been debt-free since 2020, uh, and we've managed the road improvements, even just what we gained in, in 2018. By this point, we've already fixed over 200 different, uh, place, uh, different large sizable places in our road network. And it's about 2.3 miles worth of patching that's already happened in just the three years since we've had that mill. Next portion here, uh, so the now whats and, and, uh, the question's already been asked of us and it's a good question, uh, why May? Why are we talking about this now? As I said, we've, we've built a resume and we, the time is here to make, to, to move forward on this. Our, what we learned with, in 2018 was when we went to, uh, the voters in November and we gained approval for the infrastructure millage, we never got to levy even the full amount that the voters approved for us. Uh, in December of that year, it was already rolled down. So we were already at about 98% of that, even by the time that the first mill was, was put on our plate. And like every other millage that we've had, it's continued to roll down since. Putting this on the May ballots allows us to assess this in July. It has an immediate benefit to our community and it has the full benefit to our community. Uh, it will be, um, it will mean staff will have to work that much harder to make, make use of this, but we are up to the task as we've proven time and time again. Uh, and we've finally caught up with the dip that we had, if you can think back to the 20, 2008 housing crisis. And the housing values crisis became a taxable values crisis for municipalities. It took years to catch up on the time that we lost. And, uh, we were that far behind it from a project standpoint, from a equipment standpoint, from a staff standpoint. It was, when I started here in 2016, we were still catching up on that recovery. And I, we don't want to find ourselves in a situation where cutting, 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 and then all of a sudden we're playing catch-up in the future. So it's for this reason that the, our time is now. Before we're in a, over a cliff or in an emergency, uh, even our auditors at the December, the December presentation noted that the time was now. And that's a third party independent of the city that says, uh, we need to start pursuing this now. The question is always going to say be, all right, how does this affect me as a homeowner? I'm a homeowner and everybody up here is a homeowner in Berkeley. We're all going to have to, um, make this evaluation for ourselves. We're going to give voters our best information possible. Um, as a resident, we're, you know, as we look at the average, uh, you can equate this to essentially a cup of coffee a day, uh, is about the same amount that we're going to be asking of our residents. But, um, that's the average. We won't settle for just giving average information or generalities, uh, as we did in previous elections in the past. We'll set up a calculator. We'll let you know exactly what your home, your taxable value is, if you're not aware. Uh, and we'll apply this, this formula to your house. So you know going into the, the ballot box on May 2nd, uh, exactly what this impact will be on you. And so, uh, we want to make sure that our residents are ready to have the conversation. We're certainly going to meet you, uh, as residents wherever you may be. Anybody that knows us knows that we love going to PTA meetings, holding informational meetings, uh, wherever three or more people are, if they were invited to be there, we'll come and give solid information as to, um, why we feel like this could be good for the community. Uh, but we won't advocate. We absolutely trust our voters to make, uh, whatever decision they feel is best for them. Finally, um, again, we covered the why of the May election. Uh, we want to be able to levy the full amount. And so far, if people want to know what was cut in the last, uh, round of budgeting, we do have that information available as well. Again, we'll be putting it out. We'll talk about these things. Uh, it was, we had to, we lamented certainly, uh, missed opportunities to make services better, to, to do that much more. But at the same time, we, our, um, our staff was able to still maintain the award-winning nature of our community, maintain the fact that, um, your roads are better, your services are better, um, your, pretty much, your quality of life is better, our parks are better. We have done an incredible job with the resources that we have. So this isn't a, just give us more for the sake of doing it. I implore our residents to look at our resume and see why, um, see why we, you can trust us with the additional portions of it.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgarten. I'm thinking, maybe I'll open this up to public comments first. Is there anyone that would like to comment on what you've just heard or have questions?
Uh, Joshua Hunter, Berkeley. I think one of the differences with the previous proposals was there was a citizen committee for each, uh, for each proposal, for the CIP, the Community Center, and even back in 2012 for the Headley override before it was, uh, actually, uh, put on the ballot. I think that's important for communicating what the need is to voters and residents. Uh, because I, and this is a, this is a pretty extensive tax increase. If you look at the taxable value on the, for the average homeowner on the equalization website, it's the, the taxable value is 112,750 a year. So for, with this millage, you're looking close to $400 a year for the average homeowner, based on that information from 2020. So this is, I, I have to look to the historians about, this sounds like the largest tax increase in decades. And revenue hasn't, um, hasn't fallen since 2020. It's only grown now, pre, or, excuse me, it's from 2012. Uh, it's grown every year. Now perhaps the revenue growth isn't keeping up with the, with the costs and the capital expenditures that may, that may be needed. But we need, we need to, we need to have a plan of what, how is this money going to be used? How is, and we should do that before it's put on the ballot and socialize it with the community like we did previously. So, um, yeah, and that's important because what if it doesn't pass? What's the plan going to be then? So we should take care of that now before it's even put on the ballot. Uh, so residents are aware, they're, they know what the stakes are, and then they, and then they can make a decision. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Uh, Mr. Baumgarten, do you want to comment to that?
Certainly, yeah, yeah. As I prefaced my comments, uh, this would be the, there are plenty of things that are going to come out of this conversation. A citizens group advocating for this would be something we'd certainly like to see. The city just can't lead that process. Um, so if we have some like-minded individuals in the community, uh, we'd love to see them gather together, properly form a committee and advocate for this on our behalf. Certainly, we'll, we'll be looking for those ambassadors because we've got great, fantastic information. We have a lot of the same information that, uh, we were able to provide last time. And the city just went through a master planning process. City is, uh, has a, you know, freshly audited budget, uh, and we're already into the, the process of planning for the next budget. So we have, um, we know exactly how we would like to put this money into action. Uh, we know exactly how we like to invest in the community, um, moving forward. And, Mr. Hunter i- is not wrong. I, we, I saw the same information equal, from equalization, uh, $400 a year would, um, I haven't done the math in my head, but 375 day, or 365 days in a year, as I said, it's, it's about the cup of coffee a day. Uh, and if you can imagine everything that you would get from it, for the city, uh, this could mean the difference in, um, this could mean an increase of about $2.5 million uh, of investable revenues in the city moving forward. And that's just on, that's on essentially, as he, Mr. Hunter said, just over a dollar a day.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion from council? Councilmember Vilani?
Thank you, uh, Your Honor. Uh, first, I would like to thank, uh, Mr. Baumgarten for the very thoughtful layout and explanation of why this is needed. I think that's super helpful. Um, as I look through this and also see that 3.46 per thousand dollars of taxable value, it might be helpful for, um, our citizens, our residents at home to understand the difference between taxable value and maybe Zillow value? Because we, I know as a homeowner, you know, where I bought my home a couple of years ago, Zillow thinks I, it is worth significantly more, but that's a, an inflated value. So I think to help people keep an open mind going into this, having a, a good understanding of what the actual impact is would be helpful.
Certainly, yeah. So what you can get for your home on the market is, um, again, one of those quirks of the Michigan's municipal financing system is, is often completely different than, um, than your taxable value. In a normal market, and it's aggregated across the whole state, your assessed values would be roughly half of the, the sale value of your home. Berkeley's in a hot market, um, so sometimes we see those difference. But divorced from those almost entirely is taxable values. And your taxable values are much, most people can go, you can look it up, and the majority of the homes in Berkeley, uh, taxable value lags behind the assessed value. The difference would be as if you maybe purchased the home this year. So that is, um, what you're seeing there is Proposal A in action. That's the second half of, of the two, one-two punch. So every year you, uh, you live in your home, you get, your taxable values are capped at 5% or cost of living, whatever the lower is of the two. So the longer you live in your home, the more of a tax break you get year over year by virtue of your taxable value not gaining in the same way. So if CPI is, is, or cost of living is low, uh, as we've seen in years previous, then your assessed value is running away. And then you look at things and you could lag 20, $30,000 behind. Just even if you, I was looking at a home, a homeowner, I was looking at a house today. The gentleman had built, had purchased his home in 2013. Uh, and at this point, the difference in his taxable value is, um, he's at 97,000 taxable, 141,000 assessed. So he's been the beneficiary of this lowered amount, um, year over year. Not getting too wonky on you, um, the first of the one-two punch, Headley, not, doesn't work on property values, but it works on, uh, the amount of millage, the millage rate that we can assess on there. So every time a, a home sells and you do get that pop-up value from taxable to assessed, that counts against you. Anytime you have new construction in a, in a municipality, that sort of counts against you specific to this. Community gains overall, uh, in sort of a quality of life. But you get a taxable break for, for just staying in your home. You get a tax break for somebody else not staying in their home, sort of, or somebody else building a larger home. And when you lag, and Headley was a good idea, Proposal A was a good idea. This is a situation where two rights made a wrong, uh, at least from municipal services standpoints. And so we are, um, we're in the losing end of Proposal A, we're in the losing end of Headley because both hold back the amount of revenue that we can invest in the community. And the two of them together is where, over time, we really fall behind. That's the most succinct way I can put it. Like I said, I love talking about this stuff and I look forward to having, uh, a longer conversation with the community at large.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Henan?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Um, yeah, I want to thank you for your prepared remarks. I had a number of questions, a number of ideas, and, uh, you hit on a lot of them. Five months is a pretty good amount of time for us to spend educating and, and sharing with people. So, so I don't feel like this is, you know, we're dropping it and there's, you know, why is this coming out of the blue in urgency? There's plenty of time, but, you know, we have a lot of information to share, a lot of people to talk to, and, and the time will go by fast. So, you know, we do need to move quickly, but, you know, I think there's, we've got the start of a lot of good information here, and I think there'll be a lot more coming for the community.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, to that point, could you share a little bit about, if this were to move forward tonight, uh, some of the plans that we have to begin and, and extend that outreach to share this information and answer those questions and, and help people better understand and feel comfortable with the fact that we've effectively tightened the belt as tight as we can make it, and we can't cut any more notches in the belt.
Yeah.
Um, without going from maintaining our services to beginning to degrade them.
Sure.
And certainly that's not what we want to do. We'd rather, you know, maintain and improve our services. And we can't do that by getting a brand-new belt with even smaller holes in it.
Right, right, yeah.
What can you share in terms of the communication plans that we have?
So the communication is, uh, all hands on, on deck essentially. Uh, we like to utilize factual information and sending out in the form of mailers, a lot of social media posts, uh, in-person conversations. Again, like I said, I, we would love to be able to go to wherever people are meeting and have a conversation with them. The doors of City Hall are open, physically open, uh, you know, 8:30 to 5:00. But we, you know, if, and our city staff, you know, they're driven to, to serve. And you know that they're going to be ready to go to answer those questions, even if it is off-hours or evenings or, um, you know, you know, we're ready to go. It's, uh, the factual portion of this and the, the good information that we have to share will be driven by our department directors. Uh, as mentioned, we'd love to see some citizen advocacy groups, uh, come out of this if they're interested. Uh, but again, we can't lead that portion of it. We cannot campaign in favor or against any, uh, any ballot measure. So, um, that would be, someone would have to approach us on, on doing that. Um, but to answer your question directly, we have, we do have a consultant with us that we're going to be working with in order to put together a lot of this stuff. Um, we have the plan in hand that was shared with us earlier today. And, um, it's, we're going to be talking a lot about capital, capital projects and the equipment that we can get for this, especially for the first couple of years, where we know that those, where the greatest needs are going to be.
Excellent, thank you. And, and I echo my colleagues' appreciation for the, the time and effort that you put into preparing your opening comments. That really did help us, um, kind of lay out the, the, the foundation of why we're in this particular moment now and how we're being wise in taking these steps rather than waiting longer, where we would begin to see some degradation in the services, the services that our residents have come to expect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Baumgarten, for that summation. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on R-0123?
Baker?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Resolution R-0123 has been adopted. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number six on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M-623, matter of approving the Macomb County Cooperative Bid Program pre-order purchase of one 2023 Ford F-250 pickup and one 2023 Ford F-550 chassis cab at a total cost of $112,353 from Lunghammer Ford, formerly known as Signature Ford, of Owasso, Michigan.
Is there a motion to approve M-0623?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Vilani.
Support.
With support from Mayor Pro Tem Gavin. Mr. Baumgarten?
Certainly. No better example of some of the challenges that we faced on purchasing and, and providing equipment and services to the community than the memo, uh, that Mr. Young has prepared for you. Uh, we are talking about ordering something now that won't be here for 30-plus weeks. Uh, it would be in the next budget year, so this is uncommon for us to ask for something, um, so far in advance. But as you see from the information provided by Mr. Young, uh, it's a necessity in this particular situation.
Thank you. Mr. Young?
So this is actually an, an item that got cut last year, if I remember correctly. And equipment-wise, the outlook is getting worse and worse as far as timing. Things that used to take six weeks, 12 weeks to get, now was multiple months or years. We've got a vehicle on order from budget year 2021 that has not shown up yet. So what we're looking to do is try and pre-purchase this, or at least pre-order it. The timeline they're giving us now is at least... Timeline they're giving us now is at least six months. So they're not really giving us a definite timeline, but it's at least six months. For the F-550, that would just be a chassis cab and the equipment will come later. So the equipment would be, generally comes quicker. So that would be going in front of you after, in the next budget year, after July first. We're really hopeful that the chassis cab comes in and the pickup comes in in a timely fashion, but there's no guarantee.
So if that comes in the next budget year, and if it isn't approved, are we on the hook for it?
No.
Okay.
They, uh, talking to the dealers, they want to have the order. If we decide not to take it, they don't have any problem selling it to somebody else.
Yeah, I'm sure not.
That's, and that's across the board.
Yeah.
Big trucks, small trucks, they, they've all said that. You know, you can order the truck, we just need a, an order from you. If you decide you don't want it, they're so difficult to get right now that it's no problem, we'll sell it to somebody else.
Okay. Thank you. Any discuss, Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just to kind of bring that point home then, effectively what we're proposing tonight is to kind of reserve our place in line, right? So, um, given that this is in a future fiscal year, uh, we, we know that we need it and we're being wise with allocation of funds in terms of timing and trying to, to do all that right. And as you pointed out, we had already deferred this from prior years. What we'd be doing tonight is just basically getting us a spot in line. And if circumstances are such that we can't afford it or whatever, then, um, they would be happy to sell it to somebody else then, right? So
Correct.
That's effectively what we're doing. Thank you.
Anyone out there have a burning question about the purchase of these trucks or chassis?
They're really cool.
Where is Jack Blanchard?
I know.
Yep.
He asked about the wheel ratio to the council.
And the torque and all those things. Okay, well, if you're good, I'll call for the vote. All right. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M-0623.
Dooley?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Uh, motion number M-0623 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number seven on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M-723, matter of approving the revised and updated drug and alcohol policy as prepared and required by the Suburban Mobility Authority for Regional Transportation Smart.
Is there a motion to approve M-0723?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Valani. Mr. Baumgarten?
Um, as you know, the city takes advantage of the SMARTS community municipal credits. Uh, one of those benefits is that we're provided buses through SMART that are driven by our own city staff. Uh, recently, in conversations with SMART, uh, they observed that some of the language that they've adopted, that, um, they feel is important for the drivers of their vehicles, uh, was not reflected in our existing, uh, personnel policies. So instead of just throwing it into our existing policy, uh, took the opportunity to create this as a standalone document, uh, that incorporates the language that we have in our existing merit system for our general employees, as well as our MAPE contract, uh, which was updated and is good through, uh, 2025. So this is now a one-stop shop as a, a document that we can hand to our, uh, employees, new and old across the board, and say, here is crystal-clear language of, of what applies to whom and how. Uh, specifically, as you see in the, the red text on the first appendix that, um, that calls out specifically, uh, individuals by, by title, um, so they know that yes, this does apply to me. So the red text that you have is new from SMART. The black text in here is new to this document, but not new to the city's personnel manuals.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you. Uh, might you be able to, to provide an example or two
Sure.
of some of the, either existing text and/or new text, just for folks that may not have access to see this? Just to kind of get a feel for the nature of the policy and how important we take these matters?
Certainly. Uh, the first batch of red text is specific to treatment and discipline. Uh, it does mention that, uh, you know, that anybody who tests positive for drug or alcohol, uh, that's a BAC add or above point oh-four. Again, noting that's because it's different than the state law. Uh, so there's a additional level of scrutiny for those that are, um, operating these vehicles. Uh, they face disciplinary as outlined by the merit system, the personnel management, uh, or the collective bargaining agreement. And then, so it, it calls specifically that that is the overarching, even if the standard set by SMART, what happens next is not set by SMART. So the treatment portions, the disciplinary portions are still handled by, um, our own personnel management. So we don't have essentially SMART coming in and preempting the authority of council who adopts these documents. Um, and then it refers specifically to, uh, referring people for rehabilitation through, again, the city's existing employee assistance programs. Um, and then, uh, again, that's noted, uh, we've updated our personnel manu- manuals to reflect, uh, a treatment first, um, action moving forward. Um, but there are situations where you can be at a certain level, uh, you have to be terminated at that point or you'd be subject to discipline for sure. Uh, and then going down a little bit, your second batch of red text in there for, for those at home, uh, does call out specifically those that this is subject to. So, um, anybody who's, wants to take a look at this, uh, there's kind of a table of contents in there. It does very specifically cover employees. It talks about prohibitive behavior, talks about the consequences for these violations, circumstances for testing, the procedures for testing, uh, volunteer, voluntary self-referral. So if somebody self-recognizes that they have an issue, uh, and they approach a department director, um, we can work out, that becomes a non-disciplinary issue in most cases. Uh, prescription drug use, what you, you know, what we reasonably, uh, there's disclosures, not violating anyone's private and personal information, uh, but disclosing what may show up in the tox screen if, if they have to test. Uh, and then also the proper contact people for managing this process too. So it, um, again, instead of for, instead of employees trying to figure out what applies to me and where do I go to find it, this becomes a, a very clear to read and clear-to-use standalone document.
Thank you. I appreciate the, the conciseness with which you, uh, offer some examples and the fact that we've consolidated all of this into a, like you said, a one-stop shop, so folks will know exactly what to, to look for and so they know how to be on their best behavior.
Certainly.
Thank you again.
Anyone else? Any questions or comments? Okay. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on M-0723?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dooley?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Motion number M-0723 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number eight on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-823, matter of approving the appointments to the Public Safety Pension Board.
Is there a motion to approve M-0323?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Gavin?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Dooley. Mr. Baumgarten?
I apologize that we didn't, I am noticing in the packet, I apologize, the, the names aren't included in there. Uh, what we're asking of, of council this evening is the two staff positions, uh, that we have on the Public Safety Pension Board. Uh, we'd like to re-up those terms for you. Uh, the first is Brian Bemis, our treasurer, uh, per Act 345, which is the state statute that creates public safety pension boards. City treasurer has to sit on this body, uh, as councils are aware. Uh, we recently, um, segregated the finance director position with the treasurer. Our, uh, former deputy, longtime deputy treasurer, um, just dropped the deputy portion of it. So he now receives a seat on that body. Mark Pollak has been the, serving as a treasurer of that board, uh, since he began his term as the finance director. Um, his insight is valued, uh, his tenure on there is valued. Uh, we'd like to keep them both on this body. So, again, I, I apologize if that's not in there. These are two staff appointments. There are other members of that board whose terms are not up at this point. Um, but we would like to ask that Brian Bemis and Mark Pollak are appointed to that board.
Thank you. Discussion from council? Okay. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M-0823.
Henin?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dooley?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Motion number M-0823 has passed. We are now at the communications portion of the evening and Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you. So first off, I would like to extend my congratulations to our new mayor, Dean, and Mayor Pro Tem Gavin, and our new council member, Dooley. Look forward to working with everyone, see some exciting developments. Um, and thank you to all of the applicants, not only who, uh, were here this evening, but who threw their hat in the proverbial ring. It is a big step to lean into city government, so I'm excited to see that so many, uh, amazing people have done this. It's going to be a week of, a couple of weeks of difficult conversations, but really looking forward to meeting with everybody there. Um, let's see. So, um, from TAC and CEAC, um, the next meeting will be February fifteenth. There are no updates there since there has not been a meeting since our last council meeting. From the Berkeley Area Chamber, they will be meeting, uh, on the seventeenth. And important announcement, the Berkeley Area Chamber is hiring a part-time events and operations manager. So if you enjoy supporting your community and maybe don't, uh, desire full-time employment at this time, they have a great opportunity for you. If you love supporting local businesses and our community events, this role will handle business operations, financial transactions, and, um, kind of project manage the events that go on within our community. So if you have questions or seek out more information, you can reach out to Darlene at BerkeleyChamber.com. And then just a friendly reminder to everybody that next Monday on Martin Luther King, that is not our day off, but that is our day of service. So, um, want to remind everyone that even small acts in our community can make a big impact. So whether that is donating your time, your talent, food to our local pantries, um, volunteering, I really just encourage everybody to get out there, to make a difference, um, in their own way that speaks to them and our own community with the school district also has lots of great opportunities. So if you're interested in learning more, you can reach out, um, and seek out that information from Berkeley Schools on the MLK Day of Service. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Gavin?
Thank you, your honor. Uh, like my colleague, I would like to thank all the applicants that put in and then also came out uh, to talk a little bit about your qualifications and your vision. I certainly appreciate, uh, of your willingness to give of your time and efforts and talents. And so, uh, thank you all very much. Uh, and also would like to offer congratulations to Mayor Dean on becoming mayor. I've had the distinct pleasure of, what, being able to serve with you now for five years or so and, uh, been able to see your, your dedication, your passion, the ability to, to come up with, um, thoughtful solutions to complex problems. And so, uh, all in the, the service of Berkeley residents. So, uh, congratulations, congratulations to Councilmember Dooley. Uh, and then for my quick reports, uh, the next EAC meeting will be six-thirty on Thursday, January nineteenth, on the second floor of the Public Safety Building. Uh, and then the next Planning Commission meeting will be at seven PM on Tuesday, January twenty-fourth, here in council chambers. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Hey, that's me, thank you. Uh, Happy New Year, everybody. Uh, and, uh, I would like to continue the, uh, the, um, appreciation train here. Uh, first gratitude and appreciation for our new mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and welcome aboard my new colleague friend, glad that you're here. And I too would like to, to share my appreciation and gratitude for, for all of the folks that took time to, to submit, uh, their applications for consideration for council. Uh, this is largely a thankless job and it's one that, that brings about, uh, different kinds of satisfaction and, and, and joy that, um, that is, you have to go through it to, to, to really appreciate, um, how cool this is. And so I'm very thankful to the folks that applied. I'm appreciative of the comments that we heard tonight. Uh, I look forward to the conversations and then, uh, filling the seat with, with one of the many incredibly talented folks uh, that are choosing to, to offer their services to the city. So thank you all. Uh, the historical committee meets next week's, uh, two, um, actually two Tuesdays from now, on the seventeenth, uh, at seven o'clock, January seventeenth. They're continuing their preparations for our city's one-hundredth anniversary as a village, which is coming up later this spring. Um, and they promise that the approximate size and location for the upcoming time capsule, uh, will be finalized at the upcoming meeting. Um, uh, it will not be like very large, uh, but they have, uh, extended the, the intent to council to provide some small little token of what life is like here in 2023, uh, so that, uh, future residents, when they accidentally stumble, what is this thing? Oh, that's radioactive. Um, then they can, uh, uh, see what life was like, you know, a hundred or so years ago, uh, which we're at now. Uh, the visitors are always welcome to the museums free of charge. Uh, museum is open on Wednesdays from ten o'clock until one and Sundays from two o'clock until four. And for more information, you can visit them online at BerkeleyHistory.com. Our Downtown Development Authority, AKA DDA, uh, the board meets in two days' time on Wednesday, January eleventh. Topics from their December fourteenth meeting include draft proposal for landscape architectural services, uh, to do some streetscape construction drawings for Robina North of Twelve Mile. Basically a way to activate that as more of an engaging space for community gatherings and events while still maintaining traffic flow. Uh, so we're all excited to, to see where that, uh, that can take us. And other topics continue to be the crosswalks on Coolidge, uh, the ongoing parking study, the downtown design guidelines, which are working their way through the process here, and all that good stuff. Uh, the art space at Coolidge and Catalpa by the high school, and of course, the merry month promotional, uh, activities and events that, uh, brought, uh, holiday joy to our downtown throughout the month of December. Uh, the board is busy planning an incredible calendar of events for this year, which is 2023. I'm still not used to writing that yet. Um, starting with a month-long leprechaun scavenger hunt throughout the month of March. Along with Leprechaun's Day Out from March sixteenth through the nineteenth. And you can visit DowntownBerkeley.com, uh, for more information. And finally, it was, uh, um, U.S. Representative Ilhan Omar who once said, "Hope will be found by understanding that diversity is the essence of the American dream and why we need each other to fulfill it." And so as was noted by many of the applicants tonight, and I know the sentiment is shared across council, uh, Berkeley is an amazing community and has taken great strides in the past decades, uh, to become more open and inclusive. Diversity is the one true thing that we all have in common and as a society, we're learning to embrace this more fully. The residents and businesses of Berkeley look to this council to lead and set positive example. And this not only includes celebrating diversity, but considering ways to be more diverse as a governing body. For as Stephen Covey once wrote, "Strength lies in differences, not in similarities." See why I snuck a second quote in there? Pretty clever.
It's not a secret if you tell us you did it.
Well, maybe that's part of the joke. Yeah. So, uh, please, uh, I always close this way, please stay safe and hug somebody you love because I'm telling you they need it. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henin?
Thank you. Um, also want to offer my congratulations to Mayor Dean, Mayor Pro Tem Gavin, and, uh, Councilmember Dooley. And also it was great to see, um, so many people interested in serving the city. Uh, we had thirteen applications this time, um, but we only can name one. But there's still a lot of other volunteer opportunities in the city and the DDA. So I'd encourage, uh, for those that aren't accepted to, you know, consider serving in another capacity in one of those roles. Um, the tree board's next meeting will be on Monday, January twenty-third at seven PM. They're going to be setting their goals and agenda for 2023. Um, the zoning board of appeals had no application, so they won't be meeting in January. Uh, and then on January thirty-first, the, the city, uh, and DDA will be, uh, holding the parking study open house on the ongoing parking study that we have, uh, looking for the public to come out, give their input, their participation, tell us your thoughts. Um, there'll be more information coming out on this, but it'll be at, uh, five-thirty to seven-thirty. You know, drop in, you don't have to be there the whole time. And it'll be at the High School Collaboration Center, get on January thirty-first. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dooley?
And the new guy always says, gets to go last, right? I, again, I, congratulations for mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. It's, uh, it's an honor to be, work with both of you. And I just want to say thank you to everybody, um, on council, Matt, your staff, John, city attorney. Everybody was awesome to work with this last ten days has been kind of a whirlwind. There's a lot of information for all you applicants. There's a lot that's going to come at you at once, but these guys are great and everybody is very, very helpful. So, and thank you for your applications. One thing with the Parks and Rec Department, they have got their Winter Fest, which is coming up, at the community center on February fourth from twelve to two. It's, it's outside, obviously. Hopefully we have winter weather for this, but they have, uh, a pancake walk, they got bouncers, the curling, bonfire with some mores, uh, and the ice sculptures. It's a lot, a lot of fun. It's a great day for all the citizens and the kids of Berkeley. Um, vacation camp, uh, February twenty-first through the twenty-fourth. Um, you can register online at Recreation.BerkleyMish.org. And then obviously continue to look at their website for registrations for the seniors, for the adults, for any programs that are going on now. for any programs that are going on now and/or in the future. Again, thank you to everybody. That's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you. Would you like to congratulate all the new leaders that we have in our community? The only thing that makes me happier than a Packers' loss and the Lions' win is serving this august body. You have the full force of the staff behind you, fantastic leaders in the community. Faces change, but the great intent and the solid leadership of this community never does. So congratulations to all of our new leaders on this board and the new members and the members-to-be. As Councilmember Vilani mentioned, Berkeley Schools is collaborating with Rory Loke Schools. Our own city staff had a hand in creating this great event too. It's not one, not two, but three great events all in one for an honor of Martin Luther King Day. They have a virtual keynote and presentation on Monday, January 16th. That'll start at 9:30. You can follow along on that virtual presentation on both Berkeley Schools and Rory Loke Schools Facebook pages. There'll also be keynote speeches from Quinelli Scott Free, who is the Oakland Schools Diversity and Equity Consultant, and a presentation by State Senator Mallory McMorrow. And awesomely, a performance from the Berkeley Schools Student Choirs. So it'll be a fantastic time. And if that wasn't enough, there's also a Freedom Walk, which is going to start about, we'll start lining up about 9:00 o'clock and then we'll get on our way at about 9:30 or so. The first 250 guests, not that anyone will be late, but if you're early and you're one of the first 250 guests, you get a commemorative event button to wear with pride all throughout the year. All agers, all members of the community are invited to attend. And then as the, not a day off, but a day on, that spirit embodies it. They're capping it off with a donation drive as well. So they'll have non-perishable foods, home items, toiletries, diapers and pull-ups, new children's books, clothing, whatever they can, whatever you can donate, whatever you can spare, please throw it in and they'll get it in the hands of people that need it the most. So fantastic events by three fantastic organizations all put together into one. As many members up here mentioned, there's a lot going on in the community. All of that is encapsulated in the Berkeley Buzz, which hit mailboxes this last week and is available now virtually as well. So if you think like, man, I heard about this great thing at a council meeting, but I didn't quite catch what it was, I can almost guarantee you it's in the buzz. And so get it, hold on to it, you know, star, fold down your favorite pages. But certainly keep that. It covers all the next couple of months and gives you all the great information happening in winter. And then we'll give you all the great information happening in summer with the next issue as well. But a great resource for any and all. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Sterren?
Well, I'll jump on the train and congratulate the new and older council members in their, in our restructured council and commend those in our audience who are so well-spoken this evening and aspire to serve the community. And beyond that, I got nothing.
All right. Thank you. So I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Mayor Turbrack for his leadership and mentorship over the past five years. And Dan, I know you're watching, so this is from me directly to you. I want to sincerely thank you for giving of your time, your expertise, explaining things to me, having patience, and basically believing in me. You were very generous with all of your gifts and talents, and I truly appreciate that. And we'll arrange for a more formal expression of our, the city's thanks for Mayor Turbrack at a meeting in the coming months. I'd like to thank this council for your support. It truly means a lot to me. And I can say that serving in this capacity, it makes it so much nicer to know that people have your back. And I don't mean that we always agree, because we don't always. But I know, I know these people and I know what they're made of and I know their character. And I am grateful to have them in the seats to my right and left. And I want to thank the community of Berkeley for your ongoing support. This, as it was mentioned before, this is a thankless job, but I know that there are people pulling for me, for all of us, and that also means a lot. Welcome, Councilmember Dooley. Thank you, Russ Gavin, for saying yes to being my Mayor Pro Tem. I'm taking the reins here in Berkeley at a pretty exciting time. And while our goals remain unchanged, we have a lot to accomplish in 2023. And I look forward to those challenges that lie ahead. We may not always agree on the details, but our hometown is number one, and that's as it should be and always will be. I am humbled by all the messages, texts, and emails that I've received. I can say this, Berkeley residents absolutely love, we love our city. And in fact, one of my neighbors said to me, oh, congrats on becoming mayor. I hope you're not planning on messing with the leaf pickup or the snow removal. And I can assure you that my goal, it is my goal and the goal of my colleagues on council to preserve the services that makes it, make Berkeley the special city that it is. Our goal is to move our city forward as we celebrate 100 years as a city. And I am proud to be mayor when we mark this historic milestone. I thank the Historical Commission for leading the celebrations. Thank you, and way to go Lions. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Vilani?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Henan. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Baker?
Hmm, yes.
Dooley?
Funny.
No.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The Monday, January 9th meeting of the 39th Council of the City of Berkeley is adjourned. Thank you.